Welcome, everyone. Today is Tuesday, March 28, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Zoning Board of Adjustments. Chairman Avaloni, will you please call this meeting to order?
I'd be happy to. This meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to the Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal bulletin board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action may be taken on the following matters before this board. Fire exits are located on the east and west sides of the council chambers, as well as the back of the building. I ask everybody with a cellphone to please mute it for the duration of this meeting, and this meeting is being recorded by AP-TV. Okay, please call us to order. Roll call, please.
I will now take roll call. Wendy Glassman.
Yes.
Daniel Harris.
Here.
Russell Lewis.
Here.
Jill Potter.
Here.
Tim Slick is recused and absent. Jose Alcaraz is absent. Vice Chair John Scully.
Here.
And Chairman Christopher Avaloni.
Here. All right. So the continuation of the Breakwater Treatment and Wellness Corps, 807 Memorial Drive, 906 First Avenue. Ms. Weiner, it's your show.
Thank you.
If you could give us a quick recap of what's been said and followed up.
You got it. I will do my best to remember. I'm going to apologize in advance. If you can't hear me well, I have strep throat. I'm two days into my antibiotics, but just in case, I don't want to get anybody sick. So I apologize.
We all appreciate that.
Okay, so I am Emily Weiner from Weiner Law Group, here on behalf of the applicant Breakwater Treatment and Wellness Corp. The application is for a use variance and preliminary and final site plan approval for a medical cannabis facility to be located at 807 Memorial and 906 First Avenue. Those are two lots that are adjacent, kind of in the back. They make an L shape, so the lot on First Avenue will be the parking lot, and the lot on Memorial will be the actual building, as you have heard over the last two hearings from our engineer and our architect.
So just as a quick recap, we've heard from your architect, your engineer.
You've heard from our architect.
And your managing director.
And the chief of staff of the applicant, as far as business operations and things relating to the details of the business itself. Tonight, I have two final witnesses. We have our traffic engineer, who has about 15 minutes of direct testimony, the applicant's planner, who has no more than 20 to 30 minutes of direct testimony. Obviously, whatever questions you have, we'll extend that, but we don't have a whole lot to put on tonight. Before I do get to that, I do want to go back and clarify a couple of things after reviewing the transcript from the last hearing, February 14. There were a couple of things that I do just want to make very clear for the record. First, there was a question regarding the number of people permitted in the building per code, and there was some fumbled language, about 60 people per square foot. I just want to clarify. It is one person for every 60 square feet for the retail space. It is one person for every 100 square feet for the office space, which would technically allow for approximately 90 people in the building safely. As you heard from the applicant, both last hearing and the one before, they don't expect anywhere near that in the building at any one time. In fact, they expect between 50 to 100 people per day, not at once.
I think there was another question that wasn't answered at the time, too, Ms. Weiner. It was in regards to, would you let the public in who weren't people that were considered with a medicinal use card? And I don't think that was ever clarified.
I believe that is a no. That's a no. That's why they have the security. That's why they have the people at the front. The first thing they do is they check for a medical card, or, you know, age, or making sure that the person is the name on the medical card before everybody can even come in. So you're not going to have browsers.
Window shoppers.
Exactly. That's not going to be a thing. The next thing I want to clarify is this total square footage of the building, including the vestibule, is 6,976 square feet. The applicant was asked, or the applicant's engineer, rather, was asked about the height of the light poles. There was some discussion about the two sections in the ordinance, one for 14 feet, one for 16 feet. The plans were designed at 16 feet. I believe the board's planner requested that they be 14 feet. We went back and looked at that. In order to reduce the poles from 16 to 14, it would increase the number of poles by two, so it would bring it from six to eight. That can be done without impacting the number or layout of parking spaces. It would increase the overall amount of light, but if that's the board's preference, that can absolutely be done, and we would work with the board's professionals as a condition of any approval if we were to get one, to make sure that the layout and the lighting was compliant with their needs and desires. The LSRP letter is in my email currently. I was told, as the applicant walked in, that they got it tonight. I will forward that to the board engineer. I'm told that the LSRP letter indicates that everything is fine, that they will be completed in April, and there's no impact of this, or from this proposed development. And then the last thing I want to address was actually from the board's traffic consultant's letter of March 23, 2023. It requested certain information regarding the timing of the new traffic count, which was done by the applicant. And since it's not actually traffic testimony, I'm just going to answer that really quickly. The application was first contemplated back in 2020. That's when the plans were made. That's when the original traffic study was done, because the world sort of turned upside down right around then. It got delayed. It was submitted in May of 2022. We received a report from the board engineer, August 4, 2022, board planner, August 5, 2022, and there was no mention of traffic counts or any issue with the traffic study in either of those reports. It wasn't until the December 8, 2022, letter from Dolan and Dean, that the applicant received any feedback or request for additional traffic counts. At that point, it was five days before the first hearing, so we didn't have time to do it then, but within a couple of weeks, the new traffic counts were done. It was obviously winter at that point, couldn't do a summer count in December or January. We used the industry-accepted multiplier to estimate the summer counts, and those new counts and new numbers are what will be testified to tonight and what are in the report that was submitted to you in February. Now, that was a lot more than I normally say at any hearing, so I'm going to call my first witness.
Please do, Ms. Weiner.
Okay, so that's.
You swear from a testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth's out. You got it.
Yes, I do.
Please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your office address.
My name is Matthew Sekler. That's S-E-C-K-L-E-R. I'm with Stonefield Engineering Design, address is 92 Park Avenue in Rutherford, New Jersey.
Could you give us the benefit of your credentials, Mr. Sekler?
Certainly. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from Union College in Schenectady, New York, Master's in City Regional Planning from Rutgers University. I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state, also recognized professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. Been practicing the field for over 15 years, been accepted for over 150 boards in the state, including at least the planning board here. Not sure about you guys.
Thank you. We accept your credentials. Before you proceed, Mr. Mondello, would you please swear in our professionals as well?
Good evening, gentlemen. Please raise your right hand. You swear from a testimony about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth's out. You got it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Your witness counsel.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Sekler, you're not the person who submitted the traffic report dated February 2023, are you?
Correct.
Okay. Can you tell us what you've reviewed and done to prepare for tonight, to be able to testify tonight?
Yes, as part of this application, I reviewed the transcripts that were for the previous hearings. In addition, I've reviewed the traffic impact studies. There were two of them that were submitted by the traffic engineer record at the time. Also reviewed the review letter correspondence, as well as the various submissions by the applicant, such as the site plans and various exhibits they provided to this board previously. In addition, I've also visited the site on a couple of occasions, as well as relied upon my experience working with similar applications in other locations that have visited, and I'll get to this in my testimony. I had an operating site that I believe the applicant has deemed to be similar to the one that is before you tonight.
Great, thank you. Now I'll really be quiet and let you testify.
Certainly. So as I mentioned, for this application, there have been two traffic impact studies submitted, one from May 2021 and the other one from February 2023. I'll briefly explain what changes were made between the two studies, but again, I'll indicate that in my review of these applications, of these reports, that the typical process that traffic engineers follow has been followed within these reports as well. What was done is traffic counts were conducted, and this was just what counsel had mentioned earlier. Counts originally conducted in December of 2020 in the general vicinity of the site, including the intersection of First and Memorial and Asbury Memorial. Those counts, having been conducted in 2020, were actually adjusted to pre-COVID numbers, utilizing counts nearby from 2019. Those 2019 counts are from March, and, as was previously mentioned, were considered old or affected by COVID, and new counts were performed in January of 2023. That included January 26, which was a Thursday, and Saturday, January 28, which was a Saturday, to capture your typical rush hour peak periods, as well as your Saturday peak period. As was mentioned, those counts were done in January, and obviously, down this area near the shore, traffic volumes are slightly different, or maybe very different, depending on what areas you're in near the shore between January and the summer months. So what was done is a New Jersey Department of Transportation standard for adjusting traffic volumes that were taken out of season were applied to the counts that were done in January 2023, and those counts were increased by 33%. Basically factored 1.33, all those volumes, and increased upward to account for what we typically see would be traffic peaks that occur in the summer months in this area. Now, that is not specific to this intersection or this roadway. That is what DOT generally uses within this region. Obviously, there are certain roadways, such as, you know, east-west roadways like Asbury, they may get a little higher than 33%. Some other local roadways may not see a 33% increase because it may not be affected as much by, I'd say, summer traffic in the area. But again, following the typical industry standard, those counts were adjusted up to 2023. The next thing that's done is a trip generation calculation. Now, this is how engineers like myself typically project what new uses will generate after they're open. And what we typically use is a book called the Institute of Transportation Engineers' Trip Generation Manual. Now, as engineers like myself, and potentially your reviewing engineer, have sat and counted at the driveways, number of cars that go in, number of cars that go out, and then they send that data to the Institute of Transportation Engineers. They review the data, and they publish every four, five years or so, a new publication that has all this compiled data, so we could project the traffic generated by these new uses. Now, for certain uses, such as convenience stores, residential buildings, these are obviously uses that have been around for years and years and years. This use, being a cannabis dispensary, is a fairly new use, and the IT does publish data, but that data was collected in the 2010s in four states: California, Colorado, Massachusetts, and Oregon. All of those states, when they were studied and counted, had adult recreational cannabis dispensaries. So when we take the book values, and we pull the book off the shelf, and we figure out, okay, based on the size, how much traffic would this site generate, it's a little inconsistent with what the applicant is proposing as part of this application. To give you, you know, an example, this being a new land use, since the 10th edition of our book, the 11th edition of our book, the trip generation on a PM peak hour has dropped from 162 trips to 133 trips. So just the collection of more and more data has seen a significant decrease in the trip generation for a cannabis dispensary. But again, that level of traffic is based on recreational use, adult recreational use. So what we did as part of our work is, last Friday, we went out to the operating site in Roselle Park, that this operator has in operation, and based on the transcripts, I believe they mentioned that this would be similar to that site being a satellite location. Cranberry is their main location, main hub, but Roselle Park would be similar in use, being a satellite location. And we counted not only the parking, but also the number of people either walking or driving into the site between the hours of 2 PM and 6 PM on Friday. This captured what the applicant has indicated to us as their peak weekday time period, which is that Friday afternoon time period. And based on those counts, we determined that the traffic volume generated by this medical use is significantly less than what the book value is for adult recreational use. And obviously, that makes sense in the fact that there's a limited customer base for medical use versus a recreational use. To give you an example of the differences in volume based on the book values and the medical use that we reviewed, I'll actually provide you the hour-by-hour counts of customers driving or walking into the site. For instance, at Roselle Park, between 2:00 and 3:00 PM, there were five total customers that drove in and four walk-ins during that whole hour. 3:00 to 4:00 PM, there were eight vehicle drive-ins and three walk-in customers, for a total of 11. Between 4:00 and 5:00, 13 drive-in customers and one walk-in. And between 5:00 and 6:00, 11 drive-in customers and three walk-ins. So the highest hour we saw for cars was 13 cars over an hour. Thinking about that from a, you know, perspective of how often, if you sat at the driveway, how often do you see a car walk in? Again, that's about a car every four minutes, driving into the lot, which is pretty de minimis when you think of the traffic volumes that are all around us, especially in the summer months, one new car every four minutes. We took the book values, the book values for adult use, instead of a number like 13 an hour, again, we're looking at numbers that are well above 100 an hour, or a little above 100 an hour of vehicles going in or out of the site for a recreational use. So the analysis that was performed as part of the traffic study in 2021 and 2023 utilized this recreational use and added that to the traffic volumes that were counted or adjusted based on the summer months, as opposed to utilizing counts from a medical use, which is significantly less. So while the analysis in the report does indicate that the nearby intersection at First Avenue and Memorial, where you have the stop signs on both sides of First Avenue, one really is on the other side of the tracks, and you kind of have to inch your way up, and then Memorial has that free flow, that was assuming, again, almost 10 times the amount of traffic being generated by our site, which then would impact that intersection at a greater level. That means you may have more cars waiting at the stop sign to make a right or left to turn onto Memorial, may mean there's more traffic on Memorial to try to make a turn onto First Avenue to get into the site. But instead, applying this medical use number, which is, again, about 10% of what the book values were that were utilized, we'll see that impact basically disappear. You basically, what you would see in the summer months of the intersection, when you had one new car every four minutes, it's a de minimis impact. There's really no way for a driver to really see the change in traffic when you're talking about one new car every four minutes during your, you know, evening rush hour time period. So overall, I think that was one aspect of this application. When I came in to review the studies, I thought was very important, was to understand that the application before you, and obviously, this board could write conditions and such, on the basis of this being a medical use and not a recreational use, there is a significant difference in the traffic generated by this use versus, again, a potential adult recreational one. Overall, while, you know, I'm talking about that other site, we did also count the number of cars that were parked in the parking lot, because obviously, this is an application. In reading the transcripts, there was, I would say, some discussion about what is the true parking standard for this use, because it's not permitted in the zone. Well, I will say, the site in Roselle Park has 14 total parking spaces serving that site, and at no point did we see more than seven cars parked on that site at any one time. So that site operated with seven parkers. I would say Roselle Park, you know, I would say is fairly similar in terms of the walkability in the area. They're a little further from their train station there, but the road that it's on, Westfield Avenue, is, I would say, a mixed-use type of area. There are some apartments, there are some residential, there's other businesses on the area. There's obviously, you know, some people that bike, so I do think, in looking at a comparable situation, that site operates with 14 spaces, seven of which were occupied at the max period of time, gives us a good idea that this proposed application at 34 spaces clearly will have enough, even if this is an area that sees a little bit more car traffic than the Roselle Park site in terms of the modal split between people walking, biking, and driving. I would note that, again, there was discussions that, based on how you would evaluate this site, based on the ordinance, whether it's a retail use, an office use, a combination retail use, office use, all of those seem to indicate about a 27-space requirement based on your ordinance. I think even if this was considered a physician's office, so if you consider this truly, let's say, medical, like a medical office, it would be required to have 28 spaces, and again, we're providing 34 spaces on site. So I do believe the parking supply is sufficient to support this use. I, again, would not make that same indication if this was an adult recreational use. I would have to, you know, look at some other comparable sites to see when you open it up to the general public and anyone over the age of, I think it's 18, 21, as much as I, over the age of 21, could drive and use this site. Again, very different type of operation, and I don't know if I'd make the same conclusion about parking as I would in the case for this being a medical-only site. So overall, again, as part of this application, I have reviewed the analysis included within the report. I do believe that it assumes a very, very conservative case. Trip generation, again, about 10 times what we saw at an operating site in Roselle Park that'll be similarly used. I've also found that the parking supply is appropriate for this use based on the other site, but I also think, looking at your ordinance and kind of piecing together retail applications or medical office applications, that this is a site that does have a sufficient number of parking spaces. I do know that there are bike racks that are proposed, again, help encourage users of the site to use other modes of transportation than vehicles, but again, the site, I believe, would be able to support the parking demand for this application.
Okay. Did you see Mr. Dean's March 23 letter?
Yes.
And is there anything in that letter that you can't respond to or agree is problematic?
No, I don't have any concerns. Again, the one thing I would indicate is that, you know, there was some discussion about levels of service reaching level of service F in the peak summer months, and depending on what software or kind of formula is utilized. I don't necessarily disagree with Mr. Dean's conclusion, but I would say that is based on having over 100 trips being generated an hour from the site. And again, based on my review of this application, I don't believe this would be generating traffic numbers equivalent to a recreational use. And when we look at trip generation, even if it's double the size of Roselle Park, even if it's 26 trips an hour, it's not at the level that would reach those higher levels of failure in terms of level of service in the nearby intersection.
I don't have any questions for you, if you don't have anything else to add. Oh, yeah, why don't we talk about the loading area and that access, unless you have questions?
Before you go on, Mr. Sekler, I have a question. Actually, it's more of a comment. Perhaps Mr. Dean can help me understand this. I understand you used a factor that increased the amount of traffic by 30% because it's an industry standard. I kind of disagree with the industry standard because our town doesn't just grow at 30% in the summertime, it grows well beyond 30%. We are inundated with traffic in the summertime at the height of the season. So I have to disagree with the 30% standard use. It really doesn't relate to Asbury, especially when we have concerts and all of our town is filled with beachgoers. I just, you know, have a hard time with that.
You take this way in.
Well, again, I do think that what I'm stressing in my review of this application, and what was presented, as well as my study of the other site, is that the level of traffic that we're adding, whether the road has 400 cars on it in an hour, the road has 600 cars in an hour, road has 800 cars in an hour, when you're talking about impacts of one car every four minutes, 13 cars over the hour, it's such a small amount that it will not have a significant change. I do agree that, obviously, the more traffic on the road, there's obviously more traffic on the road during the, you know, during the summer than it is during the winter or during the fall months, or the spring when we did the counts in March. But overall, we're talking about de minimis increase. In fact, the percentage increase would even be less and less and less as the road traffic increases. So I do think it's a smaller percentage in terms of our impacts.
I respectfully disagree with those statements, but go on.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, and I appreciate the conundrum that Mr. Sekler has in that data was collected, when it was collected for this application. My critique in our March 23 report is, this application has been kicking around now for nearly three years, but we'll say at least two and a half.
Yes.
And in that two-and-a-half-year period, where this applicant knew at some point it'd be in the middle of this process, I would have expected that the consultant at the time, because CME Associates does so much work in Monmouth County, it given me a hard time when I didn't do my counts during the summer, they would have anticipated this very issue. They didn't, and they had, in my opinion, two swings at it, summer of '21, summer of '22, and they didn't avail themselves of.
I would agree with those statements, yes.
An issue. The conundrum that Mr. Sekler has is, it's the handout was dealt. What DOT does is they have traffic reporters on all state highways. They have them on Route 71, they have them on Route 35, they have them on Corlees. And because DOT is constantly monitoring traffic volumes, they know, because it's counted year-long, the difference between a count in March and a count in mid-July. Whether it's differing from your opinion as traffic engineers, we're limited with the data that's available to us, and they're called seasonal adjustment factors.
I understand.
And so they're based on empirical data that the Department of Transportation has collected, that gets synthesized and produced, and it helps us in these types of scenarios to make an adjustment for summertime.
And for their lack of the work that they should have done.
We don't have a better methodology, and I do know that the community is very busy at certain times over the summer. There's no question, and we do our best to.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
You're welcome.
Please proceed.
All right, we have one more exhibit tonight. I believe we're at A7.
That's correct, A7.
Thank you.
So I'll mark this as A7. It is titled, "Loading Zone Exhibit Prepared by CME Associates. Date prepared is March 13, 2023." What it indicates and showing, and again, these plans have north hour at the bottom, showing Memorial Drive and the loading vehicle, which is a Sprinter van, a Mercedes Sprinter van, accessing the loading area. Now, to, you know, reiterate to the board, what the application's operations is, is loading would occur between one to three times a week. The loading is done by their own vehicles, by their own staff. So while it's not, I would say, regularly scheduled for security reasons, in the sense that they don't come at the same time, you know, on Monday and Tuesday and Friday, that it is scheduled in the sense that they control when deliveries will occur. What you would have is you'd have the Sprinter van enter the site, pull forward into the area that is, you know, currently the location of the existing driver on Memorial Drive. The loading would occur, again, in the open-air loading area. You've heard discussions at the previous hearing in terms of how the operations would work. And then the vehicle would back out onto Memorial Drive at week. I would, again, emphasize that this is an operation that would occur between one and three times a week. This site currently has operated as a vehicle storage parking lot previously. This is used for, I would say, showcase cars that do need to go in and out of the same drivers. This is not an access point that is not used today, this is an access point that is used today, is not regularly scheduled today, in the sense that when people want to grab their car and they want to leave, they basically come as they please, and they enter and exit the site through the same access drive that's along Memorial Drive. Those vehicles do need to back out currently, and again, occur much more often than one to three times a week, and not in a vehicle that is a Mercedes Sprinter van with rear cameras and all the works. So I do believe that this operation is less intensive in terms of vehicle use. this operation is less intensive in terms of vehicle usage of the driveway on Memorial Drive in the existing operation out there and is probably using a vehicle that is much, I would imagine, much more advanced in terms of the technology, in terms of backing vehicles, in terms of cameras and, and sensors and the like. So this is an operation that we'd be looking at utilizing again, one to three times a week. You'd have that vehicle entering likely nose first or head in onto the loading area and then backing out via Memorial Drive. And again, that time can be controlled. It can be done during off-peak periods. The one thing they can't agree on is to do it as, at a specific time on a specific day. Again, just for security reasons. They want to have their, have the ability to not be as regular in that sense.
I'm sorry. The, the van can back out without crossing both lanes of traffic on Memorial Drive?
Yes. What we've shown here is Memorial Drive. It's about a 48-foot cartway. Down the middle is the double, is the center line of the roadway, about 24 feet from the edge line, from the curve line. And this shows that the vehicle can make a single move, backing out and turning down Memorial Drive without crossing over the center line or the, the middle of the road. So you'd only be backing into a single lane of traffic and then exiting on the road. Again, not very different than if you were a single family house, you know, to have that access on Memorial Drive. You back out in the morning to leave for work, that would be that same type of operation. Again, this is one to three times a week in a vehicle that is a Sprinter van approximately 20 feet long.
Can I ask why the van is not backing in if it is a proper loading dock? Don't vans unload from the back and then you would drive out the front way?
The operation can work either way. However, with this van, it's not, it's not going into, let's say, a warehouse-style loading dock where it's an elevated dock and they're trying to back themselves in. This is more of a van where things are kind of just carried and rolled off. So this is not, it's not necessary for it to back in. But again, if the request is they prefer the vehicle to back in over the sidewalk and then pull straight out, I don't think that's an issue at all either.
Is the van unloaded from the sides or is it unloaded from the back?
From, I believe it's from both locations, the side and the back. But again, if the door, the door to enter the building is actually not in the rear of the building, the rear of the loading area, it's actually closest to the middle of the...
And is it, is it a garage door that goes all the way down to the ground? It is not a proper loading dock that it...
Yes, yes.
And the van does not go inside the building? It stays on the outside of the door? Or does it go, is it permeable?
It's open air. It's open air. So there's, there's...
Open air.
So the garage door locks, blocks it off from the main storage area and the van is in the open air area for unloading? It doesn't pull through the garage door?
So it, no, this is, they talked about it at the last hearing. It's in the prior transcript, which is why I will speak to it. But the garage door opens, the van pulls in, the garage door closes. So nobody on the street will be able to see what is going on, but there's no roof over it. So it's not technically inside the building.
I recall that. Thank you.
It's almost like a, like a security gate.
And also at the last hearing, they did testify that because the vans are driven by employees of the applicant, they're completely in control of how the delivery is made and done. If the board's preference is that the vans back in, the drivers will be told that they must back in. If the board's preference is that they pull in front, face front, that's what their instructions will be.
Is that the only van you have? Just one?
Yes.
You stated that the frequency of the van delivery is going to be less than the current use. What's your authority for that? Did you go to the site and monitor how often the vehicles are coming in and out now?
That was based on the current operator and owner. I did not do any counts at the existing location. But when I asked them, or when the applicant and the team has asked them in terms of what's the typical operation for the site, they indicate it's typically anywhere between one and six times a day does someone get a car from there. Again, it could be as low as zero or one, can be as much as six times in a day.
But that would depend on the usage of the, the current inventory, right? One site could be a hell of a lot busier than another site.
Are you talking about the existing operation or the proposed operation?
Proposed, right.
Oh, so the proposed operation is between one and three times a week. Obviously, if it's a busy site, it could be three times a week. If it's not as busy, it could be one time a week.
For the record, the existing use, you're going solely on what you were told by the current operator. You have no authority yourself to make, to make your statement that you believe the delivery of the proposed site is going to be less than the current use.
Correct. I'm going based on how the current operator has told our team the usage of that driveway.
I have a question. There's a lot of extrapolation in your testimony about the number of cars, the number of people that would be coming into the facility. You're using Roselle Park as an example. I don't know on what basis you determined that Roselle Park is in any way similar to Asbury Park in people coming into this area compared to people coming into Roselle Park. It's, Roselle Park is not a magnet of, of any sort for, for anything. So I don't know on what basis where to accept the numbers that you've offered us. And the, the second aspect of it that is, I'm not sure that you would hear when your chief of staff gave his testimony that many of the people, he expects that people come from all over because of the quality of the product that Breakwater offers. So once again, we're not talking about a local clientele. And he was purely talking about medical, medical demand, medical usage. So again, I don't know on what basis we're supposed to accept and rely on the small numbers that you're suggesting come into the facility.
So the site in Roselle Park is a Breakwater site. So in terms of the, the quality or the, I guess, destination in terms of the product that they have would be the same draw in Roselle Park as this location. It is that, that's the same product that they would have here. Now, in terms of the, the destination of Asbury Park in general, and again, I know debate that there's a lot more of a magnet of things to do in, in Asbury Park than there is in Roselle Park. But I would emphasize the fact that this is a medical use. If this was a adult recreational use and you, you know, kind of measured on what's the surrounding area and people are going to be possibly stopping by on their way into town or way to enjoy, I think it's different. If this was, you know, again, as a medical use, I don't think that a chiropractor in Roselle Park is any less busy than a chiropractor, let's say, in Asbury Park because of the destination. I think the fact that it's medical makes it a different type of, it's a different type of clientele, it's a different type of, I would say, draw than, I would say, something that may benefit more greatly from being in Asbury Park.
I just don't think that that was consistent with what your chief of staff's testimony was to us. But that's okay. It's, you're not responsible for that.
Mr. Chairman, may I follow up on that question?
Please do.
Nice to see you again, Mr. Sekler.
Good seeing you as well.
Phil, and bear with me as I try to break this question down. So your client, Breakwater, has indicated that they intend to remain a medical cannabis facility. However, they also testified that they certainly would not guarantee that they would never expand into adult use. And I'm just trying to look down the chessboard. So if, I don't know, a year from now, two years from now, the governing body decides to opt in, they may not come back to this board. They simply need an endorsement from the governing body to expand into adult use. Would this site survive?
Can I, before you answer that, yes, but this board also has the ability to make a condition of any approval that if there's any change in the use, including going from medical only to recreational, a change in a parking spot, a change in anything that might affect the use, that they must come back to this board.
You're absolutely right. However, the horses have left the board. So would the site function?
So I believe the site itself would function. I would need to review the impacts of traffic on the adjacent roadways, as was indicated by the board's traffic engineer. Based on certain methodology, he has found that the, one of the intersections operates at a level of service F, which is a higher level delay with the IT numbers, the adult recreational numbers. That said, I do believe that a level service F doesn't necessarily make something, let's say, a dangerous condition. Just because you have to wait at a traffic light, again, there may be an, a measure, maybe an impact of 10 seconds of additional delay or 25 seconds of additional delay doesn't inherently make something more dangerous on the roadway. So I don't believe that if this went to adult use, it's all of a sudden creating a dangerous condition. I do believe it is something that should be reviewed and studied in a different manner.
I'm sorry, Mr. Sekler. That's just too much supposition for me. I, I would prefer to have numbers that prove that. I, you know, accepting what you're saying is fine, but it's just way too much supposition.
Which part would you like me to clarify? The, I'm stating on the record that just having additional delay at an intersection doesn't inherently make it unsafe. There are measures of something being unsafe...
That's your opinion.
Well, again, I've studied traffic and probably have written over 4,000 traffic studies in my career and I've reviewed...
But you haven't seen this town in the mid, in the middle of summer.
I, I have seen this town in the middle of summer. I can't say I saw that intersection in the middle of summer, but yes.
Okay, so...
So I apologize.
No, go ahead.
All right. So you're comfortable saying that you don't think the levels of service will be denigrated to such an unbelievable extent. What about the parking?
So again, we do meet the parking standards if you were looking at this as a physician office, which again, if it's adult, which I think is the, the scenario you're giving me, if this is just open to adult. We do also meet the retail standards with this building, which I guess would be more akin to an adult recreational use because there'd be no limiting factor for having people in. So I do believe the parking supply would meet that. However, I would like to have reviewed existing operating sites that were operating in as adult capacity to see what their parking, what their parking demands were in order to make that definitive conclusion.
And you probably want to add in summertime greetings from Asbury Park?
Yes.
Of course. Now, can I just ask one more question? All of this is all hypothetical because that's not what this application is seeking, correct?
Correct.
This application is only seeking medical, nothing more. And based on that, your testimony still stands that it works?
Yes.
But your facility would service people coming from out of town into Asbury during the summer months when traffic is very heavy anyway, as long as they have a medical card?
Yes.
So would probably increase, I would say.
Well, I think some of those people that are coming already to town may be the people that would use the site, not necessarily people that weren't going to come to town. You know, if I was going to pick, I know this may be going off tangent, if I was going to pick a site to go to, if I had a medical card, I would probably pick, and I was going to go out of my way, I probably would pick the one that would not have a lot of traffic near it versus one that does. If I was already driving by one, yes, I may stop in and go to this location.
But the owner talks about the quality of his cannabis. People will be looking for quality.
That the owner has two other facilities with the same product nearby, near enough by...
I'm talking about the people that come to Asbury. I don't care about the other facilities. There's one facility that's in an industrial park in Cranberry, okay? That has, that is nothing close to what you're going to experience down here. Okay? So if I'm coming from North Jersey to Asbury Park and I have a medical card and I know your product is good, I'm gonna stop there.
Stop at which one?
One right over here on Memorial Drive.
Well, if I was coming from North Jersey and I was coming down the parkway, I would come down and go to Roselle Park, which is like two minutes off the parkway, instead of coming all the way down here and sitting in traffic the rest of the way down the shore.
Okay, that's true. I'm thinking about the people that are coming here, okay? Same people that get off the train drunk, okay? Because if they get off the train, then they can always walk there. Okay, so now I'm worried about their safety walking from the train station, crossing Memorial Drive and Asbury Avenue to get there.
Are there any other questions?
Please, Mr. Dean.
Mr. Sekler and I discussed, you know, his relative recent involvement in our review letter. It was at my suggestion because the accepted industry practice is when one knows the end user, rather than going to the book, the IT book with data from Colorado and Oregon, go look at the end user of the facility if it's known. And that's what he did. So I do understand that there are differing demographics between Roselle Park and Asbury Park, but as far as we...
Or even Cranberry.
We, at Cranberry, we, we know who the operator is, we, we understand how they market themselves. Let's look at what their facility is doing. Admittedly, it was a snapshot, but given the issues I raised, I find it to be an accepted practice that was done. One question I have, and it's to the board, is that you're considering a use variance. You're considering it for a, a product that's illegal in Asbury Park. And number two, is not a permitted use in the zone. So my question to Mr. Sekler is, how does the proposal compare with the traffic and parking characteristics of what would be otherwise expected in the zone? What would go in this building, and Mr. Sullivan was kind enough to give me all the uses in the LI zone, but they're fairly, you know, standard industrial machine shops and welding shops and things of that, all business and professional offices?
Yep.
How, setting aside the issue of recreational or adult use, strictly based on what the applicant has proposed, how does the traffic from this application compare with what your zone plan would expect of them?
Yeah, so again, I also reviewed the permitted uses in the zone. And again, I imagine there's a planner shortly. Some of those permitted uses are the professional office. There is, you know, you know, manufacturing, warehousing, those type of uses are permitted here. A lot of those uses would see probably higher peaks during some of the rush hour time periods in the sense if you had a professional office here, you likely would have a lot more people coming, you'd have more people coming between the hours of 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM in the morning than you would have at this use, which doesn't even open until 9:00 AM. So you would see a little bit more traffic in the morning period. Some of those uses, whether it's manufacturing, warehousing, may have some turnover during the day, similar to this proposed use where you would have people coming throughout the day to utilize the product during the, the weekday rush hour time periods, midday periods of, of the week. On the weekend, this is probably a little bit more of a use than the permitted uses. Most of those permitted uses, although they're not prohibited from functioning in the weekend hours, you know, a lot of times you wouldn't see a welder necessarily getting a lot of business on a Saturday or maybe even being open. But I say during the week, you may see a little higher level from those permitted uses during the rush hours. This use will be a little bit higher on the weekend and a little more turnover in the middle of the day.
But generally, those uses are not really customer-driven, right? There, there are people that are working at that site, but there aren't sales going on at that particular location.
Correct. I mean, they may have some accessory sales. There may be a, you know...
Minimal at best.
Correct, yes.
But the professional and business offices would.
Yes. The professional business offices allows for engineers. I think it allows for medical, but in the sense of psychiatrists and things like that, that may have people coming in and out throughout the day. That is a permitted use in the zone. So that use itself would have, say, visitors or, or patients coming in the middle of the day.
My, my other question pertains to parking in that because the use is not contemplated in your zoning ordinance, you don't have a parking standard for it. And so we've heard testimony of maybe it's akin to a medical or professional office, and it does have a retail component, much in the same way that the traffic projections were originally reviewed using ITE data. What would the ITE data suggest for parking?
Yes. I believe the parking standard for this use... Yes, I believe the parking standard for this use. I believe, I don't have that. Oh, yes, it was, that suggests 43 parking spaces would be necessary based on the IT. And again, that was based on sites studied in Colorado when they were adult use. Again, I don't believe that that, just as the trip generation is, you know, 10 times higher, I don't believe the parking is 10 times higher, but I do believe that that is not consistent with the type of operations that this use would have, being a medical-only site.
And how many handicap spots would you have again?
I believe we have two.
You think that's sufficient for a medical use? When a lot of your people are suffering from arthritis, you have Vietnam vets, war vets who have injuries, to make them park farther away from the building, can you expand that amount of parking, medical parking, handicap parking?
So if you recall, Mr. Froelich had addressed that concern.
Yeah, but you're coming to us offering us to bear medical, and I can't accept that.
Again, that is the, that is the standard. Obviously, I could discuss with the applicant if they want to go beyond that number.
Mr. Rizzo also addressed your question at the last hearing, and if we do increase the number of handicap spaces, we lose an additional. It wouldn't just be a one-for-one because you have to provide the aisle. So what Mr. Froelich had said was that they would provide curbside, so anybody that came and needed a handicap parking space or a closed parking space, if there wasn't one available, they would call from their car, somebody would bring it out to them, they wouldn't even have to get out of the vehicle. So that would hopefully address your concern, which is of course a valid concern and something that they are concerned with as well.
Valid concern about doing deliveries for people. Also asked about deliveries for people, so they only have to come.
Yeah, that's a lot of red tape with the state though, to be able to deliver.
Want to do deliveries? I, I differ, I beg to differ with you, but.
With your, with your, your comment about your curbside, so you said that you have, you have security in the building because of the product, you have a delivery with a secure door that comes down. How do you rectify the security concerns that you've told us about to somebody walking out with the product and handing it off to somebody at the curbside? Is your security guard gonna walk with that person?
So I don't know if the security guard will work, walk with the person, but Mr. Froelich did explain this at the last hearing, is the way it works is because it is, because it's medical, because everybody has their card, because everybody has their, you know, identification information, they would call, they would provide the information, they would do all the transaction inside, they would make sure that it was the person and then it would be brought out in the same secure packaging that it is, that anybody walks out of the store with once they make their purchase.
And if I might be able to just supplement Ms. Reeder's discussion on delivery. From my perspective, it is fairly rote. Most of the dispensaries ask to also have the option to deliver, and the state for the most part will always say yes, as long as the municipality gives an endorsement and agrees that a delivery will in fact be permitted, be allowed. So although there's always red tape with the state, I don't think it is as onerous as we may think.
Deliver it to the car, deliver it to their home?
Their home!
Okay. My concern then is how, how would you control the lineup of curbside delivery that wouldn't affect then a backup of cars spilling out onto Memorial Drive?
So I don't want to get into testifying. I'm just gonna try to repeat what was said at the last hearing, but that it wouldn't be additional vehicles. It would be somebody came, they need a handicap spot, there's no handicap spot available, they pull into the spot at the end of the road, and then somebody would bring it out. So it wouldn't necessarily be, you know, cars queuing in non-parking spaces. The other thing that was testified to previously is there will be parking spaces that are designated, you know, 10-minute pickup spots, or the same as you see now at all these restaurants that have the curbside pickup or whatever since COVID. So it would be similar to that in that it wouldn't necessarily just be a giant lineup of people waiting in their cars in the middle of the drive aisle. It would be people in designated spaces to pick up their order.
But you can't always control that.
Right.
If you don't know how many people are going to show up at a given moment, you can't control any of those problems.
No, but the best we can do is provide the testimony by our experts and from our applicant as to what.
Again, it's all, they're all extrapolated hypothetical numbers that we're hearing, none based on anything empirical in the area at the relevant times, whether it's a peak seasonal time, whether it's a peak hour time, whether it's what the traffic has been in, you know, this, this past August or a week ago. We understand that you are not the original author of the report, but there was plenty of time to add some empirical information for us, as opposed to say, well, sorry, that person's not here anymore, we couldn't do a study on, you're not giving us anything to.
Well, again, what I did testify to was that we did do counts at an operating site by this applicant on a road that is a actually state highway that carries about 18,000 vehicles per day on it. Again, it does not see the seasonal fluctuation that this area does, but it is on a roadway off the parkway that sees a high volume of traffic driving by it.
Will people be able to call in ahead of time if they wanted to do curbside?
That's not his, his testimony.
He's shaking his head. More to testify to?
No.
No, that's definitely not there.
You can't have multiple people testify.
The testimony in the last hearing was that if somebody comes to the parking lot and cannot get into the building because of a parking situation or there's not a handicap space available, they can call from the lot and get their order filled. I don't know if that answers your question or if you need to bring him back up after our planner, but that was the testimony previously given.
Let's finish up with Mr. Sekler.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
Any other questions for Mr. Sekler?
Would you consider a secure package?
Yeah, that's not Mr. Sekler.
Well, she said it.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear your question.
You said it will be delivered in a secure package. What do you consider a secure
I may be able to help you out.
Yeah, I mean, I can't testify.
No, you're asking the attorney to testify, Danny.
She said it, and she said it as part of her testimony, not her testimony, but she gave us that information, that it will be delivered in a secure package. Is she an expert on what a secure package is?
No.
Because if she isn't, then she should not have said it.
It is the same, it was the prior testimony of the applicant. Any product that leaves the store is going to be in a secured container. It is not going to be open, it is not going to be usable immediately without opening layers of packaging, if Mr. Mandela wants to add to it.
It's highly regulated. The state indicates exactly what the package should look like. You can't see through it. It's sealed, you can't smell anything, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you, Mr. Mandela. Any further questions for Mr. Sekler from the board? Please.
I'm not on the board, so.
Well, first the board. Now, any more from the board? All right, board professionals. Go for it.
What's the, what's the traffic volume in the summertime on Memorial Drive?
So what we project in terms of Memorial Drive, traffic volume would be approximately, and I'll give you the exact number, and this is with the increased traffic, and I assume you want Saturday? Is that?
The day of Saturday.
All right, so Saturday volume in the busiest hour is about, bless you, a little under about 900 vehicles total in the, along Memorial Drive. That includes north and southbound direction. In the evening rush hour, again, in between 900 and 1,000 vehicles going both north and southbound, which again, it's a two-lane roadway that's approximately, you know, at capacity during that summertime period.
Would the operation of that van loading area, would, would the, would the site in and of itself operate at a safer level if vans did not back out of that? Just, would it be safer if vans did not back out on Memorial Drive?
Versus backing in or?
Versus not even, not being there at all. Would it be safer?
I don't think that it's an unsafe condition because of its frequency. If it was a constant.
I didn't say unsafe. I said, would it be safer?
It's, I, as a traffic engineer, typically judge things, is it safe or is it unsafe? I don't believe it's unsafe. It's tough for me to judge varying levels. There's not a close to safe, almost safe, it's safe or unsafe.
If, if there was an option for this loading to take place on a place on this site other than Memorial Drive, and you were designing it from scratch, would you, would you design it such that it would not have a backing movement onto Memorial Drive?
I, I think the design goes into architecture and various items that are well beyond a traffic engineer's capabilities, or.
You can't, you can't say as a guy who knows cars and traffic and all that, that you would actually take the, you wouldn't take this and move it off if, all things being equal.
Well, the all.
All things being equal.
And again, that's the piece, I, I can't.
Mr. Sekler, please answer the question. Yes or no? Is it safer or not safer?
Well, I, I don't think it's unsafe where it's located.
You didn't answer the question.
Again, I don't think it's unsafe where it's located. It, it would be.
You'd be better off if you just said yes or no.
All right, so I, typically, I would have my loading operations.
I'm telling you to say yes or no.
Yes, yes, I prefer it not to be on.
Mr. Sekler, would it be even safer if there were no cars on Memorial Drive ever?
I feel like I'm in Congress.
You're not on trial, I was just saying.
Senate here. So, so the corollary is, would it be an improvement if the loading were moved from where it existed for, for so long?
Again.
Do you mean only for traffic purposes or for overall building design?
I'm gonna talk about the building. I'm talking about for traffic purposes.
Right.
This is traffic.
Yeah, so I just want to answer from a traffic perspective. Again, this driveway being in another, the loading being another location would work and be efficient. I can't speak to what works for inside the building, where the storage areas are, or anything like that. But having it on, having it through the other driveway, if you could just unload it from a parking space, sure, that would be a great, that'd be a great one. I just can't speak to unloading from a parking space.
No question.
Is that the way the operation would is?
I wasn't, I wasn't asking about that. I was asking you from, from my truck. Thank
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Sekler. Anyone else from the board professionals for Mr. Sekler? All right, I'll open it up to the public. Anyone in the public who would like to question Mr. Sekler's testimony only? Okay, thank you, Mr. Sekler.
Mr. Sekler, before you, I was gonna say step away, but roll away, I guess. I just want to follow up. It is your testimony that based on the information, the studies, the industry standard numbers, this is not a detrimental increase to traffic, and this is not an unsafe condition with the proposed use.
Correct.
Thank you. Okay, so I have one more witness tonight. It is our planner, Ron Reinertsen.
Yeah.
Who has been.
I'll give you my cards. Since counsel is so thorough, anything I cite, we have copies if you can insert into our record.
All right, good evening, sir. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear from the testimony about to give the truth to hold you to nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
State your name, spell your last name, give us your office address.
It's Ronald Reinertsen, R-E-I-N-E-R-T-S-E-N, 3141 Boardentown Avenue, Parlin, New Jersey. And I had loads of cards here for the gentleman, and I don't know what I did with.
Sorry, he's great. He's got you.
Could you please provide your credentials to us?
Sure. I am a licensed planner since 2005, licensed and good standing. I worked for CME Associates the last several years. I normally sit on that side of the table as board planner in, in several municipalities in Union, Middlesex, Monmouth, and Bergen County. Also, in my career, I've testified in many municipalities. In fact, I testified back in October 2009 for the planning board here in Asbury Park. And this is what I do, as I said, this is a little unusual. I don't really sit on this side of the desk anymore, but I'm happy to be here as a guest of your home tonight and hope you, you know, if you need anything else. And I, my degree is in planning from NYU.
Thank you. We accept your credentials. And could you say your name one more time for me?
Okay, R-E-I-N-E-R-T-S-E-N, first name Ronald.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
So I know you have been prepared for several months now, several hearings, so I'm gonna not ask anything, and I'm just gonna let you do your thing.
No, and, and first off, as I said, I'm a guest in your home tonight. And part of it is, you know, I'm gonna give my professional opinion, but I've enjoyed hearing the give and take. And, you know, you have the local knowledge and especially on the summer months. But I'm just gonna give my opinion and such and just discuss the application. I have some exhibits. These exhibits here, and counsel, I have 11x17s I could hand out to, to the board if you want to, if you want to mark those as exhibits or these.
So we'll mark those, and let's just take them one by one. A8, and if that's the first one you're going to refer to, please explain to the board what it is.
Okay. This is A8. It is just an aerial of the city. We have four other exhibits that are based on this aerial. It's a 2020 aerial based on, actually, we got it from New Jer, no, state of New Jersey standard. I know questions came up about a year, but generally 2020 seems to be the magic number on aerials. But all of our other exhibits are based upon that. I do have a methodology on when we get into these other, other things, other exhibits on what they represent. But I'm just gonna just briefly, we know we're seeking preliminary, the applicant, not me, is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval, they need a de-variants and other variances for the alternate, alternative treatment facility. And maybe I should suggest, since this is not a retail use, as was discussed implicitly, maybe we just need to go to the Jay Koenig Act and call it a medical cannabis, you know, medical cannabis alternative treatment center. That's what it's called. So I think that really is, that's from statute. The existing building on Memorial Drive, I'm going to go to A9 A9 is, A9 is, what we did here are color-coded, it's a zoning map far off of the whole city. That's taken actually from GIS data from the city. City has great shape files for that, so we're able to do that. The proposed cannabis facility is basically in the middle of the city. It's in the LI zone. It's actually on the border of the B, of the B-zone, and also the, and the B-zone is on the other side of Memorial Drive. So it's truly almost a transition area of the city with, with two different zones. Property consists of two interior lots, L-shaped lots. Memorial Drive has the, has the building. First Avenue has got the, has the proposed parking lot area. It's fenced off now and is used for, from my observations, I was here on August 5th, Friday, August 5th, from 12 to 1 or 2, just examining the area of la, last year. I just witnessed it was fenced off and was used for some truck parking. The property, again, I went over the zone, the B-zone is non-residential. There are specific mixed uses and artists live-work studios, upper-story residences are permitted in that B-zone. In fact, the property right next door is a, is a mixed-use studio. So I'm just gonna mark this A10. My terrible handwriting. A little closer up. So again, we could see where the B-zones are in red. The LI zone is a little lighter gray. So basically, the, the land uses that I observed from my walks and observations just reflect the different underlying uses permitted in these specific zones. Just one thing, the LI zone tends to be more permissive. Was discussed in the last meeting that there are certain design, the design standards for commercial and mixed-use buildings, but the ordinance itself, and I know that was cited in the planner's letter, the, the standards themselves are applicable to R1, R2, R3, and B-zones, but not the LI. That's, that's omitted. So basically, what are they here for? The alternative treatment facility is regulated by the CRC, the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. It was first adopted in 2009, and it was greatly amended in 2019 and is now known as the Jay Koenig Compassionate Medical Cannabis Act. And the primary intent was to decriminalize medical cannabis use in New Jersey. So it also needs a state. So it also needs to state, issue permit to operate. They just can't show up and operate, it's licensed by the state, and they don't hand these licenses out like M&amp;M's on Halloween. They're highly regulated. Now, since then, you've had a different act, which criminalized, decriminalized cannabis use throughout the state, which is the 2021 New Jersey Cannabis Regulatory Enforcement Assistance and Marketplace Modernization Act, CREMA. And it says, well, CREMA, one thing that CREMA gave was the opt-out provision. These opt-out provisions are not applicable to ATC facilities. So when the ordinance that opted out of uses, that was for recreational cannabis. It was not for this particular use. And in fact, there has been little or no, except for the statement that was made on the first hearing by the attorney, I guess, for the council, there's an absence of legislative intent when it comes to this. I'll get into that later on.
So I'm sorry to interrupt you, so you're referring to ordinance 2021-25, the Asbury Park ordinance?
Correct.
That opts out of recreational?
Correct. And now it's LDR 30-78 cannabis. It's applicable to CREMA. But just one other item about that opt-out provision, there was a resolution adopted. That text, and I compare that text, it is identical to a cannabis opt-out standard language template prepared by the New Jersey League of Municipalities and the New Jersey Institute of Local Government Attorneys. That doesn't mean it's good or bad, it's that the municipalities, when CREMA came about, they said, "We don't know, we don't have time to handle it." And that was the record here at Asbury Park, too, that I read here. They said, "We need time to figure this out." And that's why they adopted, this wasn't a, at least from what I can read, you know, a blanket prohibition of all cannabis uses. This was strictly recreational cannabis. They said, "Time out, we don't have, we have 180 days to enact this, we can't, we don't have enough time." So this municipality opted out, other municipalities I represent opted out, but it was recreational, not medical. So, you know, the interesting thing is that, you know, most states, most, you know, this particular use is not really regulated in many municipalities. Roselle Park is one, you've heard that testimony, it is, it's very few and far between. So one of the things, though, that is a little different from Jay Koenig, from CREMA, is there is a statement that Jay Koenig says, the CRC says, "The application shall not be disqualified for consideration if the application does not include submission of zoning approvals or proof of local support." This whole thing about local support's a little chicken or egg thing, but the CRC has the option of waiving that. It is not a requirement for this use.
So that is a requirement for recreational, but not for medical?
Absolutely. But let's face it, if they don't get approvals here for the use, then the point's moot anyway. But the local letter is, the local letter of support is not required for this particular use. So one of the interesting, I'm going to go to exhibit A11.
Do you have handouts, sir?
Oh, absolutely, I'll hand them out.
Can we have, please?
That's early on. I've got copies of everything I have, but I'm going to do.
Can I hand that out?
You can tap that. Do you want to hand that out?
Sure. You talk.
Okay, I'll talk. So basically, A10 is, was created to basically show 1,000-foot safe zones. And doesn't touch this site. It doesn't. The closest, the closest facility is the Bradley School. And that's more than 1,000 feet away.
Did you mark that?
I marked that as A11.
Thank you.
Okay? And A11 is the same area we had before, except showing the 1,000, the safe zones. Now, the interesting thing is, is that one of the things that CREMA did was decriminalize cannabis. The reason that this, oh, sure, I'll wait, I'll wait, be happy. Okay, I hope I didn't cheat anybody, I got extras. Okay, so basically, one of the things that, again, this is an evolving process. CREMA was just enacted a couple of years ago, but now, some municipalities, as I've discovered during these hearings, have started looking into these safe zones. And in fact, Jersey City, I have a copy of this, I could enter that, you know, for counsel. Jersey City Action Guidance dated 11/1/22 stating in part, "It's the opinion of the Law Department as well as counsel to the city's Cannabis Control Board that the 1,000-foot drug-free school zones are null and void and functionally superseded by the cannabis decriminalization signed by Governor Murphy in February 2021." And there was a legal reason. The 1,000-foot drug-free school zone statute is solely a criminal statute, and the actions by the legislature to ensure that ATCs complied with that law were premised on the criminalized statute of cannabis at the state level. It's been decriminalized now. Now, you know, no offense to Mr. Dean there, it's not, the operation of a cannabis operation is not permitted in the zone. It's not illegal in the state.
It is in Asbury Park, in the ordinance.
Oh, in the ordinance? No, 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 I understand, but use is not. The operation is...
I'll leave that to the authorities.
But I mean, I can go out and use cannabis, I can go, and I don't, but I mean, if I need recreational cannabis or cannabis, I'm not going to get arrested, so.
That's correct.
Yeah.
However, if you decide to sell some within 1,000 feet of a school zone, you will.
Yeah, but again, this is...
Two C colon 35 dash seven.
Exactly.
It's the one statute that our legislatures left out because they were concerned about schools. That's where the 1,000 feet still remains in play.
Yes, and counsel, I perfectly agree, but our exhibit shows it's outside the 1,000 foot. But I'm just saying for a point of fact, that there are continuing discussions with municipalities throughout the state on how CREMA impacted Jay Koenig. And again, at least for Jersey City, they think that it's null and void because that was a criminal statute, and that's their opinion, but we're here saying we're 1,000 feet, you know, they are 1,000 feet.
They're a matter of way in Asbury Park.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm the Cannabis Control Board attorney for Jersey City, and we don't want dispensaries within 200 feet of schools.
Yeah. So, yeah, and I saw that in the guidance. So basically, one other item, and I'm going to mark this as A12.
I'll refer to you with the question.
So basically, what the applicant has to do is two things. I always talk about the negative criteria first, and the only reason is every variance, whether it is inherently beneficial use, a C variance, a D variance, has to meet the negative criteria. And it's substantial detriment to the public good, but substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and ordinance, zone ordinance. And the positive criteria is special reasons for the D variance, or practical difficulties, hardship, and the applicant is not saying they have a hardship here. So, and then there has to be an enhanced purpose of zoning if you have a, for a C2 variance. So basically, the applicant is proposing non-permitted use on the subject site. They need to seek a special reasons use variance. Medici said that the testimony should be provided, testimony there's special reasons for permitted use, and citing questions particularly suited for the use and provide an enhanced quality of proof that the variance sought is not inconsistent with the intent and purpose of the master plan. That means that when we get to the negative criteria, not only do we have to address a substantial detriment to the zone, substantially impaired zone plan, we've got to talk about the master plan, too. Basically, there are two case laws talking about C variances in relation to D. There used to be a term called subsuming. That was the Palio case, says the applicant for a use is not permitted in the zone. Basically, the bulk regulations are not applicable for the intended use, and in consideration of use variance must then be considered in overall site design. In essence, it's subsumed. Now, there's a more recent case, Price-Himje, which was a Supreme Court case, basically, they didn't use the word subsume. They said it's, you could, you can consider C variances ancillary to the, you know, secondary as part of the whole site plan. And one other case I always like to cite, Kaufman and Planning Board, and say, you know, the focus on a C2 case should always be on the characteristics of land that present an opportunity for improved zoning. And I think, I just like the word characteristics of the land. Variances aren't given out just because it sounds like a good idea. What's the characteristics of this parcel that lends itself? So basically, for special reasons, I'm going to use a little rationale here that is used actually in telecommunications, and I think is applicable. I think the issuances of state licenses sufficient to establish that this proposed use serves the general welfare. State has considered this applicant, they've licensed him to operate, and that goes to logic that was going back to the court's holdings in smart FERLON decision, which said that the issuance of an FCC license was sufficient for a telecommunications carrier to establish that the use serves the general welfare. State agency is said that we would like you to provide these services. So some other special reasons and purposes of the acts, which is the Presidential Land Use Act. I think the ATC, from good site design, would provide adequate light air and open space. Purpose G, these are lesser things, I mean, once you satisfy purpose A, that's the ballgame there, but I'm just citing these other purposes of the act. I know the planner's letter mentioned that. Purpose G, providing sufficient space in appropriate locations to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens. And purpose I, to promote a desirable visual environment to creative design techniques. And again, I'll leave that, design techniques has been talked about between the board, the board experts, and, you know, I think at this point, I think it has been addressed sufficiently, and I'm sure if there's some other suggestions, they might consider that also. So the site suitability, interestingly enough, the needs of the ATC, it's serving the community, it previously expressed their support to establish proposed use. I'm just going to say there is on the record that your own bayer expressed support for ATCs and recreational use of cannabis being permitted in Asbury Park. That's public record, but there's other ones here. Asbury Park itself had the second highest approval for recreational cannabis uses. 83.989% of voters voted for the amendment, and that was cited in the Asbury Park press. And zoning is, it's permitted, it's proposed in the LI zone. It's generally more permissive, and permitted use relates to underlying zoning. And one other thing I would say that has been cited by the board, too, about, it's near, it's near train stations, near mass transit. They're going to provide bike parking. So it's accessible by auto and mass transit. It's not an all and auto-centric area. The applicant has provided information that at least 1,565 patients live within a 10-mile radius and a 20-minute drive. Their rolls show that. And which, of which 426 patients are residents of Asbury Park and Neptune. It's also more than 1,000 feet away from state-defined sensitive uses. And it's actually one of the few places in the city, and this is this A12, that is outside state-defined uses and not a residential zone. And if I, I hope I can talk loud enough. Here's your parcel. What we did is show where else in the area that are outside these, most of them are in residential areas, to the east and such. Now, the standard is not the perfect site for a use variance. And the Price decision said, "It's not that the property is particularly suited for the use because it's most suitable in the community. Rather, the use should be appropriate and especially beneficial based on the unique conditions of the site and surrounding area." So my summation is, on the positive criteria, it does mean special reasons. Again, it serves the general welfare on providing alternative treatments. It's a state-licensed facility. It's near transit. It's, so it can serve a more diverse population. So I think it, you know, that's my summation on the positive criteria. So on the negative criteria, there's two parts. Public good. The ATC will operate, it's a secure, well-designed location. It's located in industrial zones surrounded by other commercial and retail activity. It's well-separated from residential uses. The impact should be minimal at most and does not come close to rising to the level of having a substantial impact. Again, it's substantial. We could always say that every use, whether it's permitted or not, has a negative impact. If you have a home, and you build a subdivision, you increase traffic, that's a negative impact, but then you just try to design around that. So that's the high point, that's the threshold, substantiality. So we can, now we can talk about the impact and the purpose of the zone plan and the zoning ordinance. The city has not addressed issues since 2009. So while the act was enacted in 2019, amended in 2019, it's been around since 2009. And medical cannabis laws are distinct from recreational. CREMA has the opt-out laws, and I've already mentioned Jay Koenig does not. CREMA requires municipal support, Jay Koenig does not. And also, as such, the city's opt-out ordinance prohibiting recreational cannabis uses except for delivery services. That's a statewide statute, you have to allow delivery services. It's not applicable to medical cannabis uses as proposed here in the Jay Koenig Act. And I mentioned about the policy statements that were in the opt-out. These were just generic boilerplate, there was nothing unique to Asbury Park. This was drafted by the League of Municipalities for the benefit of other municipalities. There was nothing Asbury Park specifically in it. So there's an absence of guidance, there's a vacuum. Where are, where is the city's policies? I mean, it's, there has not been addressed anywhere. It actually wasn't even addressed in your master plan in 2019. So there's just silence on the issue. But this one case, Saddle Brook Realty versus Zoning Board of Adjustment, they cited Medici, you know, they're saying that sometimes the proof of character of a community has changed substantially since the adoption of the master plan. And ordinance may demonstrate that a variance for a use omitted from the ordinance is not incompatible with the intent and purpose of the governing body when the ordinance was passed. So the master plan was enacted in 2017, my apologies, wrong notes, I thought I read 2019. Jay Koenig was revised in 2019, it's 2019, and CREMA was passed in 2021. There has been a sea change when it comes to this use. And quite frankly, I would never have imagined this change happening this fast. Now, the enhanced quality of proof, now we're going to go to the master plan, just going to cite some sections. And I'm going to go sequentially, it doesn't matter, what I'm saying here doesn't mean one's more important than the other. I just, I'm very linear, I go through the book. So Section 3, Prior Planning Efforts, page 14, cited, "There are emerging opportunities locally and regionally in healthcare, professional services, that have potential growth opportunities within the city." That's in the Community Workforce Strategy of 2017. Section 5.2.1.2.5, Planning Goals, page 36. "Encourage a diverse economic base that relies on year-round activity in a variety of economic sectors, including retail, healthcare, light manufacturing, and technology." There's a theme, there's a lot of healthcare here. Section 5.2.2.9, Visions and Recommendations, Item 2, page 55. Light industrial, and they suggested adding urban agriculture, but that's not what they, that's not really the point of me citing that section. They said, "This use has become relevant in New Jersey's urban areas, can provide a service to area residents of businesses, and can be appropriate tenant in a light industrial area, given its facilities' needs." So I think that there is thoughts that, you know, there are other uses possibly in the light industrial zone that could be useful. Section 5.6.1.1.5, New Economic Objectives, page 76. "Encourage the healthcare and professional scientific and technical services industry sectors, as they are expected to experience significant growth in the next decade." Section 5.6.2.4, Economic Development Recommendations, page 77. "Amend the land use ordinance to permit industries anticipated for growth." And in two of the zones cited, with B2 and the LI zones, should be amended to permit uses in industries anticipated for growth that offer economic opportunities. Such industries include, but may not be limited to, healthcare and others. Asbury Park Economic Conditions Assessment, Appendix, page 9. Healthcare and social assistance is projected to be the fastest-growing industry over in the next decade, with an expected increase of nearly 26% by 2025. That was, that was the key finding. Oh, industry growth may... Oh, industry growth may introduce an increasing diversity of job opportunities for area residents. And that was the project takeaway. So in the summation, and this is the Medici proofs, the higher proofs. I think that the application doesn't cause substantial detriment to the public good. It doesn't substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. And also, you know, I've cited reasons from your master plan for that enhanced burden of proof. There was some discussions, I know in the first application, about inherently beneficial uses. Now, I am not going to come here and put proofs on the record for inherently beneficial uses. Because I think if you meet the Medici standard, you'll meet the CECA standard. But I would say this. The ATC use displays the characteristics of an inherently beneficial use. Because originally inherently beneficial uses were created by the courts, and most famously in the CECA decision, which was a decision from Wall Township. Dr. Seeger was seeking to build a head trauma facility, if I recall my case law correctly. Basically, though, that it is, so that one of the characteristics of the inherently beneficial use, I would just say that it provides state-licensed alternative medical treatments to those who could benefit. The non-opioid medical care. The findings of the Jay Conig Act. First finding, it says, "The legislature finds and declares that modern medical research has discovered a beneficial use for cannabis in treating or alleviating the pain or other symptoms associated with certain medical conditions, as found by the National Academy of Sciences Institutes of Medicine in March 1999." That's in findings declarations relative to the medical use of cannabis. Again, I have the copies of the Jay Conig Act. This was the legislature saying this. Also, "The ATC is limited in number and must meet the stringent licensing requirements." Going back to CECA, that was one of the findings of the court. They said, "You could have a use that benefits the community like a doctor's office." But they're numerous. That doesn't mean it's inherently beneficial. In that case, what the court said, the CECA, Dr. Seeger's proposal benefited the general welfare. It was by nature limited, a head trauma center, but it was, you know, it served a more regional need. So that's why they declared it inherently beneficial use. So I go back to here. This is a use that's licensed by the state. It's limited in nature, so I think by that thing, that categorization, it does have a characteristic of inherently beneficial use. So also, the CECA court said inherently beneficial use is satisfied a positive criteria. You don't have to discuss site suitability, which I've already done with my testimony. So there's a four-part balancing test, just to sum up, I'm just putting it for the record. You identify the public interest at stake. And the public interest at stake here is supplying alternative treatment for the community and also the region. A state-licensed use. Identify the detrimental effects that will ensue from the grant of the variance, which really gets into the negative criteria. What's the impact? And, you know, there has been great concerns about traffic, and rightfully so, and expressed. So then you consider whether the imposition of reasonable conditions will ameliorate the identified detrimental effect. Sorry, I'm good. Basically, that's what can we do to mitigate? And then, at the end, you weigh the positive and negative criteria and determine whether on balance the grant of the variance would cause a substantial detriment to the public good. Again, I'm putting that for the record. I'm not saying that, but logically, I mean, I've already concluded my professional opinion that it meets the higher Medici standard and also logically would meet the more, for lack of a better term, more relaxed standards of the CECA inherently beneficial. And I don't think I took 20 or 30 minutes like I said before. That's my testimony and happy to answer some questions.
Please, Mr. Mandela.
So I understand, you know, your position that as a result of having the state license, it meets the special reasons, the general welfare. That state licenses for other locations. You don't have a state license for this satellite location that you are proposing. And I would just simply point to NJAC, the regulations correctly, Jay Conig is the way to go. It's 8:64-7.1, and that is the permit application procedures and requirements for these ATCs. And I'm not going to go through the laundry list, but the items that are required to be submitted to the Department of Health, now the CRC, is written verification of the approval of the community. I'm not sure what that means. Or the governing body, I know what that means, of the municipality in which the alternative treatment center is or will be located. Given the fact that the borough attorney, and I guess the governing body, passed that resolution, making it clear, sure, we didn't opt out because that has to do with adult use, but we want to make it clear that we are not permitting medical use. I'm not so sure how you get past that requirement. Number two, evidence of compliance with local codes and ordinances. Again, I'll repeat, I'm not sure how you get past that and how this board can't view it any other way other than usurping the governing body's intent if they were to grant this. But I'm sure you'll explain why.
Well, for one, I agree, and I think I said, when it comes to getting local zoning approval, the CRC has an option to waive the local support. And there's three items there, and two of them are pertinent here, but the local support and the zoning approval. Now, the points moved on zoning approval. If they don't get approved here, it's not going to happen. So I think that that's irrelevant. But I think what's more relevant is that they can waive the condition for local support.
Have you ever seen them do that? I have not.
I haven't, but it's there. I mean, I just have to make the record for it. But the other thing about usurping the legislature. The opt-out was for recreational.
Understood.
It did not address medical. It's never been addressed. Now, I know there's an old term, "Nature abhors a vacuum." But, you know, I mentioned telecommunications before. And, you know, talking about limited in nature. The smart fair lawn decision, they knew that there were going to be a lot of FCC license holders. It just wasn't. And obviously now, it's much different than 98. Everyone has cell phones. I have to put mine away right now. I realize it was out here. When I testified in 2009 here, I bet you know, a quarter of the amount of users there are now. So, but that's why the court didn't declare it an inherently beneficial use. They said, "We're concerned about the proliferation of sites, and it would just kind of dilute the meaning of the inherently beneficial use." But the interesting thing is that they said that the license itself, it didn't matter about the number of licenses. That it satisfies, they serve the general welfare. Now, when it comes to inherently beneficial, that's a different story. That's limited by nature. That's why I said.
Please forgive me, and I'm not as smart as you. I thought the simple question was, and I understand smart, I'm from Fairlawn. The question simply was that, given the fact, and I understand your position is that these things can be waived. I've never seen them being waived. But how does, I just want an explanation, is how does this body grant this use variance? And the governing body not view it as a usurpation of their powers, given the fact that they clarified on the record that we don't want this stuff?
Can I address that?
Sure.
But I would prefer to hear that from the planner.
Well, no.
It's kind of a legal issue.
Yeah, it is a legal issue, but I think.
You're citing cases.
I am citing cases, but you know, it's funny, I mentioned Saddle Brook Realty. That particular case had to do with the prohibition of fast-food restaurants in Saddle Brook. The ZBA, and this is after the fact, and the court, Judge Gilman said in the case that there was not much of a record on why they forbid it, but the point was it was in black and white they forbid it. And then the zoning board went ahead and approved it anyway. And they said, "No, that was a clear usurpation." Because the council had made clear, the governing body made clear, they didn't want fast-food restaurants. There has never been.
Did they do that here?
No.
Okay.
Not for medical cannabis.
So the resolution, all right, go ahead.
Resolution was done two months after this application was submitted. So even if it is applicable, the time of the application rule means that it's not applicable to this application.
All right, one other thing then.
It's also not a regulation, so it's not applicable.
So, but is there not a provision in the Asbury Park ordinance that states if it's not specifically permitted, then it is prohibited?
Yeah, and that's a very fair question, and that's a boilerplate. Most municipalities have that.
You don't even need it.
You don't need it, but most municipalities have that. But logically, you know, interestingly enough, I was looking at the code because I wanted to see what the current use was. It's a classic car, I think it's a storage facility. It's not permitted in the LI zone. Then I found out that auto repair shops, motor vehicle repair shops and gas stations are not regulated in that ordinance at all. I'll be standing corrected by the planner. So I mean, going by that logic, that means Asbury Park doesn't want to have gas stations or any uses. So I think that's why the board has the flexibility and heavy responsibility to weigh these things out. So I think that that's really a boilerplate to cover everything because one of the things is the.
And that's what I'm struggling with, and maybe you can help me. We know, hold on a second. We know that in Asbury Park, the ordinance essentially says if it's not specifically permitted, it is prohibited. And then we have this resolution clarifying that. I understand time of application rule, and it's not an ordinance, but it was simply the governing body adding to that provision that if it's not specifically permitted, it's prohibited. Would you disagree with that?
I would disagree with that. I mean, I know, I said, I would disagree with that because I think in general, nothing that is not regulated, if it's not addressed in the ordinance, if the use is not addressed in the ordinance as permitted anywhere, it's not permitted in Asbury Park. However, this board has the power to weigh these situations because an ordinance itself can't contemplate every single use.
Agreed, and time changes.
Exactly.
I mean, some places still gyms are not mentioned, so.
Sure, and.
I don't want to chew up too much of the board's time, and forgive me, Mr. Chairman. You did mention inherently beneficial. I know you said you weren't putting on the proofs, but I guess my question would be, aren't there other ATCs or adult-use cannabis facilities in the area that would meet that demand that you testified to?
I'm not aware of what is in the area, except for what I've testified to. So I can't represent either way.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry to take so long.
No, no, no.
Can I follow up on that? I don't want to jump.
Please, Mr. Sullivan.
Do you know what the relevant market area for an ATC is for medical cannabis?
I do not have that. I do not have that research.
So you don't know whether people come from a mile away, five miles away, 20 miles away, you don't know?
I do not have that.
And you don't know whether there are any other ATCs or adult-use dispensaries within the relevant market area of the site you're proposing?
Except for what was testified to here, no. I understand it was one facility in Neptune, but no.
Well, that's, I don't know who said that. I'm asking, you don't?
I don't, and I have not visited the site. I'm focusing on this particular site and this particular use.
But relevant market area and what can serve. It's a relative benefit, they're saying a benefit. So that's relevant to how much benefit, and that's the way I see that. That's why I asked that question.
For a question.
In terms of, it sounds like you reviewed the land use. It sounds like you reviewed the 2017 reexamination report and land use plan element.
Yes.
So you did review that. And you mentioned several of the economic goals and objectives there. You did not mention the fact that a specific recommendation, and I quoted it in our report, was that limit the LI light industrial district to light industrial uses.
I saw that, and that was.
But you didn't mention it.
Well, I saw that it was, but you were, and that was in a discussion of limited to light industrial uses. That was addressing retail uses invading light industrial. As we have acknowledged, this is not a retail use.
Okay, let's talk about that. Who are the customers?
Who are the customers? Anyone who's holding a medical card.
Okay, so, and that's a person?
That's a person, understood.
So it's retail?
You, you know, we acknowledged, and your letter acknowledged this, it's not exactly retail either. So it's a hard category to put into.
Would you not, would you not say it's analogous to retail? Because people can drive up, they can come in, they can purchase things personally, not for their business? Would you not acknowledge?
Oh, absolutely. I would say that it could be close to retail, but it's not, by nature in itself, is not a retail use. I mean, it has a retail element. They are a business. They're not here for, they're not a nonprofit. They're going to be making money. But there's a lot of other uses that people make money. Doctors are in business for themselves. Understood, but I'm just saying.
Are you familiar with the, let me talk about the master plan. So you said that the city has not acted since the Jay Conig Act of 2009?
Actually, yeah, the original Medical Marijuana Act of 2009, which was reclassified as Jay Conig.
And the fact that they did not address cannabis in the land use plan element 2017 for the reexamination report, which reviewed the zoning and knew that that was out there and did not permit these things. You're saying that that's not good enough justification for them to say that they have excluded it? That they would actually go back and say affirmatively?
My, yeah, my answer is that's, there's an absence of record in that. I think that they would have to address it in one way, my professional opinion.
You think they would have to say it?
They would have to say it. I mean, it was out there. They knew it was even, it was even opportunity when they, when they adopted the KREMA opt-out, they could have taken the opportunity at that time.
To do a whole land use plan element?
Well, no, you could have just said that, you could have just said it was, what that resolution was, was KREMA-specific. They could have taken the opportunity to address medical ATCs, but they didn't. Again, it's an absence of a record.
Okay, so that's the record, right? So normally when, and you hit on this, looking back to see if uses were omitted and zoning is stale, right? The zoning is stale. Let's say the zoning was adopted in 1990, and nothing's been done, and there's been no reexamination report, and someone comes in with a new use and they say, "You never considered this use." And the use didn't exist until 10 years ago. You didn't do it, right? Then you say, "Well, you know, now we've got a case." And the case would be made not as a special, you know, advancing the purposes of zoning, but it would be a hardship, you know, it's more or less. This isn't that case, in my opinion. This was, there was a reexamination of the master plan. There was a zoning ordinance done. And the fact that they didn't say affirmatively, "Let's not do this." They didn't have to, because if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. So I don't look at that. I don't see it your way. So that's my point. But when you're looking at variances, it's important to look at them that way.
And I would tend to agree with you, Mr. Sullivan, since I was on the zoning amendments committee, looking at all of it. And that was just recently completed.
And I think that, you know, there's been some dismissiveness of the governing body's opt-out statement, and then the resolution, and then, I mean, first of all, municipal attorney come to board the decision meeting. It's a rough night for him. But anyway, and what they essentially were doing was saying, "Yeah, we didn't say this affirmatively, but we're telling you now, this is how we feel about it." From a municipal policy standpoint, and whether it's a usurpation or not, I don't believe in that, but I'm looking at it through the lens of land use policy and what they're saying. So if there was any doubt that the land use plan element and reexamination in 2017 were not satisfactory to convey the policy direction from the city, they made that very clear, in my opinion, and that's why we put it in here. So I just want to get that part of this, about this. And I think that the displacement of the LI zone, when they did affirmatively say, "Don't mess with the LI zone by putting retail in there, keep it industrial." And part of that is, and I'll give you a little background on that, and Chris was involved, so. Was that there's a core of businesses in Asbury Park, and with the regeneration and revitalization and reinvestment, there's a need for these artisans and craftspeople and people who do that. And Memorial Drive is the place where many of these things are housed. So there was a recognition, they didn't want it to be residential. They didn't want it to be retail. They wanted to reserve some place for these businesses to do this because they were serving all the revitalization that was going on. And I think that that's what I remember from it and why that was done that way. So I hope that gives a little background to the board because not all of you were involved in the policy generation and development here. Are you familiar with the site plan?
Yes.
Is it a fully conforming site plan?
No.
Do you know what's not conforming?
The setbacks for the front, setbacks for the rear.
Those are the existing buildings?
Yeah, they're pre-existing, yes. Yeah, they're pre-existing, yes.
That's it?
Um, I don't have it all in front of me, but.
I, I mean, I don't necessarily agree with you that everything is assumed within the de- mer.
No, I, that's why I said I, I, I use the word ancillary. That's really what the courts have said.
But, but there's a, there's a significant list of, um, aspects of the plan that are not conforming, whether it's a design exception or, I'm more, I'm more focusing on the design exceptions. Um, the existing building is the existing building, but the parking lot is, does not meet the shade tree standards, does not meet the buffer standards. We talked about lighting. Um, there are issues with lighting at the property line and other things like that. And you said that this is proximate to residences nearby.
You know, I said it was not, well, they have the mixed, they have the artist mixed use in the B-zone that is there, but that's a small, that's a small area. There's an alcove on that. And I think that there's been enough testimony that, from, from the, from the engineer about, you know, that they could be 14-foot lights or 16-foot lights, whatever you want. There's also acknowledgement that, yes, there is no shade trees, but they, you know, they, they were trying to get, you know, here's a balance. They're trying to get more parking in here. And you've had some board members too, just saying, you know, maybe we need more parking or, or parking dedicated to people who are, are handicapped and such. So this is a balance here. And, uh, you know, in the end, the design waiver is a design waiver. I mean, um, I'm not dismissing it, but I think that the, the parking lot isn't an alcove. It's, it's, it's surrounded by three sides. It's very limited to where it, where it is with that artist mixed use area, uh, which is next door and which is in the B-zone. And there are no other residences that are visible from, from, from the parking, from the parking area.
In terms of policy from the master plan, one of the land use objectives is upgrade the appearance and function of neighborhood business areas.
I'm, I'm sorry. I'm.
I'm sorry. I was hopping him.
I got a little sidebar. You're cheating him.
Yeah. So, yeah, land use objectives, upgrade the appearance and function of the neighborhood business areas.
Okay.
And it's not capital neighborhood business, it's business area. Have you seen the, the building, the architecture for this?
I, I have, I have seen the current conditions and the, the proposed conditions. I, I think it would be, I think it would be an upgrade. Again, that's, that's, that is a decision that, I mean, ultimately between the board and the applicant here.
Do you think that allowing loading vehicles to back up onto Memorial Drive as they have for, um, as long as they have, rather than changing it to a, to not allow loading on Memorial Drive, does that upgrade the function of that?
Um, it's just maintaining existing condition. I would just say this again, that I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm jealous that the traffic engineer is a planner. Um, I think it's common for people on a everyday, it may not be Memorial Drive, but people can live on busy streets and they have to back up from their driveway twice a day, three times a day. It's saying three times a week. They testified how they will be able to mitigate that, 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 that particular feature. If you choose to put it in the, in the parking lot, it's, it's a whole redesign. I'm not, I'm not going to open up that can of worms and just.
That wasn't, that wasn't what I asked.
But I said, I, I think if, if you had the.
Do you disagree with the traffic engineer that it would be better if it were?
Oh, no, I, I, I concur, I concur with the traffic engineer. That's not my role. I'm not, you know, I go by his expert opinion. And he feels that, yes, he said in, in the best possible world, if you had a, you know, if you had a parking spot and if you had a loading area in that parking lot, perhaps that would be a better, better solution.
Okay. I don't have any more questions for now.
Can I go back one second and address one of your?
Oh, sure.
Things. So something that the applicant had been looking at after your initial report was trying to find a way to eliminate some of the variances, some of the design waivers. Uh, the only way that that can be accomplished is by losing several parking spaces. It would still be compliant. It would still provide 28 spaces, but with the parking being such a major concern, um, it was deemed that seeking some additional design waivers was better than reducing parking by six spaces. So if.
Yeah, but those spaces though, then you'd lose seven to employees, correct?
Well, I mean, that was the testimony last time. It's the same, it's the same.
So as you decrease to meet our design exceptions, right?
Mm-hmm.
You're actually not in compliance with the required parking.
No, no, it is in compliance. It's still, there's 27 or 28, depending on which.
But seven of those spaces would be taken up by employees.
But that's included in the calculation. That was the testimony last time. I'm trying to, that's why I'm not trying to clarify.
You understand what I'm saying?
I do understand what you're saying, but that's also why there are so many design waivers sought, because the parking was more important.
So it doesn't sound like this is an appropriate site.
Well, the applicant's experts have testified that they believe it is. It is not for me to say.
I see.
I'm not the expert. I'd like to be, but I'm not.
I understand. Any further questions from the board for our, for their planner?
I do. I have a question to follow up on our board planner's first question to you. So you gave us a bunch of positive criteria. Some of those were to meet the needs of all New Jersey citizens, provide the services to the community and the region. And as our board planner pointed out, and as you agreed, you don't know if these services are being met somewhere else outside of Asbury Park. So as the board, how are we to, and you can help me understand this, how are we to take your testimony on the positive criteria when in fact you stated to our board planners and to this board that you cannot answer the question of whether these services are being met somewhere else in the community or the region?
Well, this may have gotten buried in here. As I did cite, and this is information that the applicant supplied me. Understand, it's not studies I did, but they said that they, of their existing patient base, they have at least 1,565 patients within, living within a 10-mile radius and a 20-minute drive.
On Asbury Park?
Of, of, of the facility, 10-mile radius and 20-mile drive, of which 426 of them are residents of Asbury Park in Neptune. So, I mean, that is figures that was provided.
I don't understand what you're saying. That you're talking about.
You know, there's a talk on.
Residents of Asbury, patients of your other facilities?
No, yeah. Current, current patients, current patients of Breakwater.
Right.
They have.
Elsewhere.
Of, of, of this particular applicant, his.
At their other locations, yes.
Their other, their other locations.
That, that was, that's what I wanted to understand.
So they have 1,565 within a 10-mile radius. And then breaking it down, a 10-mile radius and a 20-mile, 20-minute drive, and of which 426 patients are residents of Asbury Park in Neptune.
But you can't tell us, you can't tell us that of those numbers, if their needs can be met somewhere else in the community or the region? Because you, as you said.
I, I cannot. I mean, I know what, you know, that they, that they are customers of Breakwater. Whether or not that they can get the same facilities in Neptune or elsewhere, I, I cannot say.
So these are people that live close to here, but still travel to either Roselle Park or Cranberry to get this particular product?
That would be correct.
And how many people do you believe in Asbury Park or the, or this region are not being serviced with quality cannabis at this time?
I, I do not have that number. That was not provided. There was not, there was not studies done provided by the applicant or, or I didn't take it upon myself to do a study. I'm a planner, not a, not a, not an economist or assessing demand.
That's also a proven negative kind of thing. That's hard to do. How many people are not getting what they need? We don't know.
Can I, can I ask one more question?
Please, sure.
You, you know a lot more of this about the cannabis law. That's why it's here for me. Um, how easy is, is it to get a medical cannabis card? Do you know?
Um, I believe that you, I do not know specifically. Council Mondello would probably, uh, council would probably know better, but they, I'm sure that they would have to get, um, someone's giving a prescription.
It's a doctor's prescription.
Yeah, that's basically a prescription and they have to hold a medical card.
It's a doctor's prescription and a patient.
Yeah, I can't just show up and say, hey, I got pain. This has to be a diagnosed condition. So again, that goes back to the title of it, alternative treatment facility. Now, you know, when I first started with this application a couple of years ago, it's been an educational experience that, that, you know, just seeing the different types. I mean, for one, I always associated medical cannabis with just cancer patients because it helped early on evidently with, and I'm not a doctor, let me phrase that, but helped with alleviating the symptoms from chemotherapy and such. I, people heard that all the time. I didn't even know about the pain aspect, that evidently there's certain cannabis products that evidently can help with pain, which the Jake Honing Act cited is their policy statement one. Again, uh, learning, learning experience, um, you know, I'm assessing the land use element and I have to know what the nature of this site, of this, of this proposed use is. So there is a, it's multifaceted. Um, and what they basically would, to come back to it, they need a prescription.
Or, or, I don't want to get technical, but this, the, the symptoms and the treatments that cannabis is used to treat or the conditions that it's used to treat, do pharmacies also have, uh, drugs or, or over-the-counter medicines that would also treat those things?
Yeah. Logically, yes. But that's why this, this was called alternative treatments and people who would maybe not want a, a more non-opioid treatment because of the addicting nature. Again, I don't want to get into medic, I don't want to get into, because I'm not a doctor, but I think just the term alternative treatment, there are people seeking treatments that, that aren't in the traditional sense. And that they would seek treatment via cannabis rather than, than other alternative treatments.
It's a personal choice.
It's, it's, it's a doctor's choice. I mean, I can give you, uh, you know, I can give you just offhand comments on it, but I'm not a doctor. I mean, it's ultimately there are diff, there are treatments, alternative treatments for many different. It has to be patient by patient. And some patients obviously are seeking this treatment.
Any further questions?
So are you comparing it to acupuncture?
Possibly. I go to a chiropractor. I also go to a doctor. I believe everything's on deck, whatever works for a person. But I don't go to, I, I go to people who are licensed. And that's what's being licensed here.
I understand that. I wouldn't expect you not to.
Yeah.
Okay. But when we talk about the counseling aspect, okay, I don't even know if I should be asking you this, but, um, previously, I'm sorry. He used to be a basketball coach. I was good at yelling then. Okay. When we talk about the counseling aspect and you're talking about a medical card, does this facility assist the patient or the prospective patient during counseling to get a medical card?
That was previously testified to.
I'm not asking you.
Okay. We call the prior testimony. You can.
Actually, you know, it's been so much testimony, I have to say.
His testimony.
Okay. Then it's outside of hers too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
He, he's not the one to discuss that.
I didn't, I didn't.
Okay. Could we possibly address it to the owner?
He's here.
If you would like, we can call back Mr. Froelich.
Yeah, please do.
I'd be happy to.
But first, we have to complete you.
Okay. Whatever. I'm not trying to run away. I'm here to answer the questions.
Any further questions for their planner? Board professionals, no? I'll open it up to the public for their planner, just his testimony. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for having me today.
Do I continue?
Please.
Mr. Froelich, for the limited.
Yes, we're going to do this very briefly. Mr. Froelich, I'm reminding you, you're under oath.
Absolutely. So, yeah. Please state your name for the record. James Froelich. Um, thank you for having me back for the third time. Um, so, yeah, to answer your question, we don't specifically work with a physician. Both the state and our website provide generalized information about where you might be able to find a doctor. Not every physician is in the program. Essentially, the, the process for them is that they would send their credentials into the state. Um, the state would then check that they don't have any issues with overprescription or anything going on with the Board of Medical Examiners to assume that their permissions for prescribing are in good standing. And then they would allow them an access point into the state registry, which then allows them to register a patient, provide them a prescribed amount, which is then tracked in real time to ensure that the patient is only getting their exact prescription. And as I testified to previously, that's all tracked. Someone couldn't do, you know, back when there was people pharmacy hopping with the issue with the opioids. That's not something you would be able to do. It's all updated in real time to ensure none of that is.
No, it's, it's three ounces a month. I understand that. Okay.
That, that is not for everyone. That is up to the physician. That is a maximum amount other than a terminal patient, which can have an unlimited amount. Three ounces is the maximum amount a physician can prescribe.
Okay.
But even if I have a medical card, I can go to an adult dispensary and I can get an ounce for every single day. I don't have to wait.
If that, if that were your desire, you could go to an adult use. However, we are not an adult use dispensary.
Not suggesting they would.
You could not go to our facility and do that.
But if I had a card, I could go to an adult facility and get an ounce every single day for 30 days.
And your, I'm sorry. Your facility doesn't assist patients in getting the cards. It's only once they have a card that they can come to you, correct?
That's correct. There's some generalized information as to what physicians are in the program. The state also has a list of physicians who are in the program, but we do not assist them in getting that card.
But you have a list of physicians in the program?
We, we have, yeah, the state provides that list. And that's not inclusive of all physicians in the program. That's the one who chose to be listed publicly.
And is that list made available to the people when they come in?
Well, you wouldn't be able to come in unless you are a patient.
Okay.
So that's on, that's online. And as I said, the state maintains that list, not us.
Okay. All right.
And then once, uh, once a person has a medical card and they come to you and they say, hey, I have the card. My doctor says I should take this medicine. I don't know. You've got a lot of stuff here. What should I try? How does that work then?
Yeah. So we have, and as I testified to.
Okay. So you're adding to his testimony. There was just one question, Ms. Weiner.
I thought that was the question. I'm sorry.
Please no follow-up to anything else.
Sorry.
Mr. Froelich, you're done.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
All right. So the next is the general public. We're going to open it up for a comment. If there anybody would like to be heard either in favor or against this application, please state your name and, uh, address for the record.
Timothy Donnelly.
Oh, wait, wait. We get four minutes. Four minutes.
That's fancy. I like that.
Ready?
Timothy Donnelly, 1601 Fourth Avenue, Asbury Park. Um, I am one of the close to 500, uh, clients of Breakwater. Uh, I drive to Cranberry to get my medicine. I've driven to Roselle Park to get my medicine. Westfield Avenue in Roselle Park is the main connective tissue in Union County, and it is a busy road. I could basically equate it to Memorial Drive, by the way. I went to King College, used to drive that road every day for years, very busy. My needs are not being met at Zentleaf. It's not being met in Eaton Town. The medicine that Breakwater provides has changed my life. My diverticulitis, my IBS, my anxiety levels. The tincture that they make has changed my life. I have seen it cure my sister with cancer. It has changed her life to the fact that now she's like in remission, healthy and anxiety-free. I live in Asbury Park. I own a business in Asbury Park. I know Memorial Drive just like everybody else sitting up on the dais. Memorial Drive is about to be reimagined. The firehouse, the development at Fourth Memorial. I'm looking at the future of Memorial Drive, like I'm looking at the future of Asbury Park. Now, if this isn't like approved because of some laws that were maybe retrofitted, even though we all voted for it, 83% of people voted in this town for it, it really bummed me out. It really would. Asbury Park to me is a progressive, honest, and sometimes happy place. It's not happy all the time, but when it's happy and the magic happens, there is no other place in the world that I would rather live than this city. People are coming here to Asbury Park. They're coming here. They're spending money. They're getting parking tickets. Okay? They're coming here. They're coming here for all reasons. They're coming here to drink. They're coming here to buy furniture. They're coming here to buy food. They're coming here to dance. They're coming here to meet somebody. My God, if they can come here and buy medicine, if they have a prescription and a card and they can legally purchase it and they're adults, I don't see what the problem is. Now, the restore on Memorial Drive between Third and Fourth Avenue, go by there on a Saturday morning and tell me about traffic problems on Memorial Drive. Look at Main Street, at the liquor store between Second and Third Avenue, where people double park and panhandling outside the liquor store. Nobody's saying anything about that. Nobody's looking to them. nobody's looking to them to change their habits or what they can do. So for me, I heard a lot of lawyer talk, I heard a lot of questions, my needs aren't being met. It was really hard for me to get a medical card, really hard. I've had a medical card for seven years, it's not something, and I pay every month for my medical card, I paid the state of New Jersey $500 a year to carry this card in my pocket. So it really kind of bums me out, it kind of hurts me that it wouldn't be allowed here, in this place that is so welcoming, it helps a lot of people, it would help the people at the Mercy Center, it helps senior citizens, and it would give jobs to the local community. So as a resident and as a patient, I implore you guys to say yes to this, and with the new tax stuff that's going to be coming down the pike, who knows where the city's going to be getting extra revenue, and this is somewhere to get, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public, either for or against this application? I make a motion to close public session.
I'll second.
All right, so, Ms. Weiner, do you have a summation?
Um, I do, a short one, because I've spoken a lot tonight and I don't want to take up any more time, but I would like to just conclude. You've heard a lot of testimony, you have heard about the operations of the proposed facility from Mr. Froelich three times, you've heard about the site, heard about the building, the existing conditions, the proposed conditions, how it's going to be better, how it's going to be wonderful. You've heard the testimony from the applicant's engineer, their architect, their traffic engineer, their planner, these are all professionals, these are all licensed professionals that your board has accepted as professionals in their fields, their testimony should be given the weight that it is due, it should be believed when they speak that they are not doing this just as a paycheck, they are doing it because their professional opinion tells them that it is a good application and it is a good use for this location. You heard from the applicant's planner that the application satisfies the positive and the negative proofs, you have heard that the application meets all requirements of the site plan ordinance. At this time, I am asking you to do the job of a zoning board, to be an independent quasi-judicial body that uses the information learned at the hearings before you, the testimony and the evidence and the record before you, not preconceived notions, not ideas of what may be if something changes one day, the application before you tonight, and February 14th and December 13th, and use that information and that testimony and approve this application for use variance and preliminary and final site plan approval for a medical dispensary. We understand there may be concerns of things that may happen down the road, as the board, you can put conditions on any approval to make sure that that doesn't happen, we ask that you do that. And we thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Weiner. All right, so it's back to us on the board and to deliberate. I ask for comments from the board.
Okay, personally, I have no problem with recreational or medicinal, okay, doesn't bother me one bit, okay? I would prefer that over opioids any day, I've seen what opioids have done, I've seen what heroin has done, I've seen what crack has done, supported by the United States government, okay, so that does not bother me. What does bother me as a citizen of Asbury Park is to override the city council, that's what bothers me right now, I'm not saying whether I'm pro or for, but if it's not there, then why come here to change it? Okay? Because we would set a dangerous precedent for the city council and for the citizens of Asbury Park, if every time somebody was told, no, you can't do it because it's on paper, that you can't do it, the people would run to us and they'd do it anyway, that's the problem I have. I would rather see it done through the city council where people would not come up with an alternative venue to overturn the law, that's how I feel.
I have to agree with Danny. My issue stands with the resolution, I think it's 2022-360, where they enhanced the decision to prohibit medical cannabis, and I think this is the wrong venue to come before us rather than try to change city council's opinion and ordinance to allow it.
I understand what you said about your board professionals and the weight that should be given to them, my concern is that your planner is asking us to accept his positive criteria, his analysis, and he could not answer the question of whether these services and the needs were being served outside of the community or the region. Your engineer admitted, I believe in his testimony, that the parking spaces, or the size of the parking just that he used was a full-size pickup truck, and he agreed that the Sprinter van was the same size as that, he initially said that there would be mobility for the Sprinter van to make deliveries in the rear. Again, I questioned his analysis when in fact he admits that he used a full-size pickup truck to lay out the parking lot. Your architect was asked about the redesign of the building, to put the delivery in the back, said that that would require an additional restructure of the building, again, that's, that's not our responsibility, I understand that there's a shell of a building there, but if it can be designed in a way that makes it safer, I think that's the board's responsibility to make sure that that's done that way, or at least to ask them. Those are just a few of my concerns.
Anybody else?
I'm, I'm familiar with Breakwater a little bit, I know the quality of your product, much like Mr. Donnelly's testimony, I have a friend who's been recovering from cancer treatment, and he drives to your facility because he believes it's the best product that he can find. I think you run a really good business, I think Asbury Park would benefit from having a business like Breakwater in town, I don't have a problem with recreational, I don't have a problem with medical, I think you'd be an amazing addition to this town. Like my colleagues, the line in the sand for me right now is this resolution that the city council has been very clear on, and their intent is very clear, and as much as I would like to see this business happen and this facility move forward, crossing that line for me is a really difficult one, and I believe that the city council should be involved in this decision, even if they were approving of this, you would still have to come before the zoning board for all the other little adjustments that we need, so as much as I am in favor of your company, and believe me, I am, I'm, I am not compelled to cross that line at this time based on the testimony that I've heard.
I also have to agree with the other commissioners that this is not a role that we should take, you don't, you serve the role of our elected officials, and even the characterization of your plan that the language was used in the ordinance was, spoiler clay, that does not take away from the fact that it expresses an intent of our elected officials, and I don't think that its weight should be reduced simply because it comes from model language. In addition to that, I think that a lot of the testimony that we've received has been extrapolated data and that we don't have actual real data to wrap our heads around to approve many of the waivers and eliminating a lot of the considerations that we have about what the detrimental effects would be to the immediate community.
And as I agree with all my colleagues on the board, I too have further reasons why I am objecting to this application, not because I personally voted to legalize cannabis, but because I don't find this site appropriate for the application. When we discussed our concerns with where the delivery of the cannabis would occur and backing out onto Memorial Drive, we were told that there were state statutes that prevented the delivery of the cannabis to the back of the building where the customers would enter, and when we repeatedly asked about the state statute, we had to wait till Mr. Froelich came up and told us there is no state statute. And why were we told that? That kind of dropped your credibility in my eyes. And then, when we voiced our concerns about cars queuing around and around from Memorial to First Avenue, because there was no parking available, I was told, well, there's plenty of parking on First Avenue. Personally, I don't even know how you can make that statement when you have nothing to back it up. Any of the studies that were done were not done at the height of our summer, where parking is at a premium here, traffic is horrendous, I mean, I can't even get out of my own driveway, it's so bad. You know, I just have to say that I just don't find this site credible for, and looking to the future, even though you told us not to, we have to look to the future for every particular approval we make, and if at some point there's a different council that may or may not allow recreation here, this site really becomes untenable. So I'm afraid that I'm just not in favor. So, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to deny the application.
I'll second it.
Wendy Glassman?
Yes.
Daniel Harris?
Yes.
Russell Lewis?
Regrettably, yes.
Jill Potter?
Yes.
Vice Chair John Scully?
Yes.
And Chairman Avaloni?
Yes, to deny.
Motion carries, best of luck.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Weiner, thank you, Mr. Froelich. And I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.